Since there are quite a few people here, if you could raise your hand if you wish to be called upon and state your name, and then if you direct all questions through the chair, should be things go a little more smoother, all right? Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for May 26, 2015. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart present?
Colin McNab, go ahead.
Gordon Clark present?
Colin McNab present. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being tape recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions, we have one, 4.1. Review request from the Board of Library Trustees to appoint Molly.
Benavides.
Benavides. All righties. Town Administrator updates and reports. Andy?
Just one thing, or two things, actually. You may have noticed as you're driving down Route 13 South that work is moving along nicely on the Fire EMS headquarters. Over the last couple of weeks, they've been doing earthwork and putting up forms. It started to pour, they started to pour last week, and so things are, things are moving along pretty well there. And then the Devens Household Hazardous Products Collection Center will be open next Wednesday and, yeah, next Wednesday and next Saturday, weather permitting, nine to noon. Check the website if there's any fear of inclement weather. It's all good.
Okay. Selectmen's updates and reports. Go ahead.
Thank you, Colin. I have an announcement to read here. The Townsend Military Band will open its 2015 Thursday evening concert series on Townsend Carmen on June 4th. Weather permitting, the band will play a concert from the bandstand on the Carmen each Thursday between 7:30 and 9:30 p.m. through release August 13th, with the exception of July 23rd. The Townsend Military Band is managed by Betty Mae Tenny of Townsend and will be conducted this year by Thomas Souza of Chelmsford. Mr. Souza is a Brandeis University Winter Ensemble Director, the head of Nashua, New Hampshire Public Schools Music Department, and the band director at the Fairgrounds Middle School in Nashua. You're all cordially asked to attend, and if you have any questions, please contact Betty Mae Tenny at (9) 78-597-6495. Thank you. This, first of all, this is my first televised meeting, it's our actual third here, so I'm just gonna do a quick update of some good things I think the Board did, the first two, just to update you folks that wasn't televised. On our first meeting, the Board worked together to fix an oversight that was done in the selection of some new appointees or things, and with the help of the chief, who was very instrumental, we now will have a checklist so that goes smooth in the future. So I thought that was a very good thing. And then the second thing was that there was a, many of you people will be familiar in the area of Trace Harbor and South Harbor Road and Warren Road, there's been a large difference in the road there, and kudos to Ed Kukla with the Board here and with Mr. Sheehan, we were able to get Unitil to fix that in two days, it's been that way since six months. And so I want to give some appreciation for good work, and Mr. Kukla got on that, and Unitil now knows that they're working the work here, but when they work on our roads, it's gonna be restored to the way it was before. So I thought that was a positive thing. And then the, the last thing was, the Board last week, I don't have it exactly correct, but there was some leftover money from salaries, and a portion of that is going to be put to surveillance cameras up at the Highway Department. And part of the reason I thought it was necessary after Mr. Kukla was nice enough to give me an overview of the department, I realized that that treasure that's been built up there for our community is way up in the back of the woods there. So it's subject to theft, larcenies, and no thi, so we're gonna approximately, Mr. Kukla's in charge of that, maybe with Carolyn Zalios on there, to protect that asset up there. So there's going to be surveillance cameras put up there, they have recording devices. We're gonna start protecting these assets that have been given to us. And thank you very much, Mr. Colin.
Carol?
Yeah, I just had a few things. I was hoping, Colin, that on our next agenda, since we have a new Board member, we could have our goals back on there to kinda assess where we're at and where we're.
I think that maybe we might want to just at least discuss them, but not in depth, just so it's, because that, it could be a lengthy conversation.
Okay, well, whenever you want to put it out, if you want a work session, that's fine, but I know Mr. Clark wasn't here when we developed them.
And I'm sure he has some.
Can you hear me now?
It doesn't, it's not a microphone. I mean, it's not a, doesn't.
It's recording.
It's recording.
It's recording, it's, I'll try and yell. The other thing I wanted to let my Board know is that I'll be attending the next Cemetery and Parks Board Commissioners Meeting. I've had a lot of residents come up to me with concerns about trash in our parks and cemeteries and trash barrels, so I wanted to let you know that I'd be talking to them about that.
There is one issue, I'm actually gonna be at that meeting for another matter.
Oh, are you really?
Yeah, so.
Can we post it?
I don't, I'll, let me talk to Andy and we'll figure something out.
Okay. And then the other thing that I just wanted to ask is if it's possible, we could have a discussion on the IT services in the June 1st meeting, because that's coming up, the end of the month there, we don't have somebody in place, so.
Sure. Not a problem.
And that's it.
Okay. I just have one thing, I wanted to give my condolences to the family of John Camber. John served the Townsend Fire Department for 17 years, and he's been, lived in Townsend for most of his life, and I just want him, I want his family to know that our thoughts and prayers are with him, or with them. All righty. 7, 1.7 Meeting Minutes. Vote to approve open session meetings for March 24, 2015, April 21, 2015, and May 5, 2015. Did everyone get a chance to read them?
Yes.
My only question would be, is the only one I was actually present at, Mr. Chairman, was May 5th, so I would probably abstain from those, because I'm not sure if they're in accurate record or not.
I'll make two separate motions then, if that's okay.
That's okay, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the open meeting minutes of March 24 and April 21, 2015.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I can't abstain, sorry.
It's all right.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for May 5, 2015.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to release executive session minutes on March 24, 2015, March 31, 2015, April 7, 2015, and April 14, 2015.
Mr. Chair, I have a question or a point of order, since neither myself or Mr. Clark were involved, how?
I spoke to Town Council, there was, there's been a request that these minutes be released, and we have a certain time limit. We're not voting about their content, we're simply voting to release them.
Okay, so as long as it's clear for the record that I can't verify the, so, Mr. Chair, I would move that we release the executive session minutes for March 24, March 31, April 7, and April 14, 2015.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Roll call. Do we have to do roll call?
We're not in executives.
Okay, I always thought we had to do it on executive session.
All right. 2.1, a 6/10 appointment, right on time. Historic District Commission, Anno Kalpe of the Historic District Commission will be present to discuss the historic districts. Mr. Kalpe?
Yeah.
That'd be. Make way.
Do I have to yell?
Not yet.
Basically, my 10 minutes or so, it has to do with the Historic District Commission in town. They're governed by the Mass General laws, and it's basically to preserve and protect the extinguishing facts of the district. So the way it works is, there's a board of up to seven people, but most boards in town is difficult to get every minute, so you struggle a lot. Anyway, if something's going to be done within a historic district, it has to be, you have to file an application for a certificate of these, excuse me, applicability, excuse me, non-applicability or hardship, those three. I'm not going to bore you with the details of what you just approved, but the Board has to respond to your application within fourteen days. After that, given that they either approve or disapprove, they have up to 60 days from the day of filing to make something happen. More and more to the point of tonight, let's see, a problem in West Townsend, which has existed for about 32 years, everybody knows that the town meetings then, that had been back in the eighties, there was a big controversy of whether the, the motion was voted on or they voted on the article, or nobody seemed to know. I have a short paragraph from Mrs. McGeiger, who was town clerk at the time, at the time, and she said, "Nobody seems to know." So, to that point, what I've done is I've gotten ahold of the Mass Historic Commission in Boston, and they have somewhat of a handle on it. They have a list, which I'm trying to coordinate with, which Hank gave me a list as well that we have, and he's been very helpful, because he has the fire chief in this whole business. So, anyway, the Legion Hall specifically is in the district, just so as you know, anything that happens there needs to go through the Historic District Commission. If they, I don't have a personal agenda with that, but if it's approved, then it's not a problem. If it's not approved, the Historic District Commission is governed by Mass General laws, and the only recourse anybody has is to go to this Greek court and say, "You guys have to make a decision." So, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Eno.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Very much.
One thing, Colin, Anno, one clarification.
Yep.
The Legion's in the district, but the fire station is not?
That's correct.
Okay.
All righty. 3.1, Complaints Against Employees. Continuation of discussion regarding complaints brought by Selectman Carolyn Smart against town employees. The Board may enter executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A1 to discuss complaints brought against public officers, employees, staff members, or individuals, but I believe we will not be doing that, we'll be remaining an open session. So, from our last meeting, I believe, Carolyn, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I actually put together a statement, and I have a copy of it. The reason I wanted to do this was to ask questions, but when I'm done reading this, I think you'll understand why I'm not. After receiving complaints from residents and gathering, can everyone hear me?
No.
After receiving complaints from residents and gathering information regarding employee wrongdoing, I forwarded a package of information to Town Council after being advised I had a responsibility to let my other two selectmen know of the allegations and complaints. The package outlined a variety of issues, to include exempting employee counts from late charges, abuse of overtime, vacation time, mileage reimbursement, scrapping of metals and surplus items without depositing the money with the town, or declaring the item surplus as mandated by our bylaw, deleting inventory databases, town credit card issues resulting in a reduction of the town's credit to 500, limit to $500, overcharging of customer counts, collecting fees and not turning them over to the town, and reimbursement of supplies for personal use. I sent this package to Town Council, asking for his assistance and alerting the other selectmen and for guidance. I did this on January 9, 2015. I never heard from Town Council until the end of March, approximately a month before the annual election. I was told the former chairman of the Board had called a meeting to discuss the complaints. When I arrived at Town Hall, I had a conversation with Town Council. He indicated that the former chairman of the Board had expressed concerns with me being in the meetings as I was the one that filed the complaint. I agreed to recuse myself from the proceedings as a selectman. On April 17, 2015, I received an email with a selectman's agenda, noting one of the agenda items was the finding of the selectmen, findings of the selectmen regarding the issues. I emailed Town Council and asked for a copy of the findings, and inquired as to why I was never interviewed or questioned, nor the residents who filed the complaints. I asked for the investigative reports and evidence that was gathered in order to determine their findings, and I was told there's no investigation report beyond the selectmen's findings. Knowing I was not going to be able to attend the meeting, I respectfully asked the agenda item be tabled, as is customary when one selectman is not in attendance, to which I learned by way of the newspaper was not done. In my 15 years of serving towns, and I haven't seen such professionalism, further to subject a town resident and employee alike to public disclosure without due process, independent fact-finding, gathering of evidence, and without written reports is alarming, and it compromises our public trust. Well, I had, I'm sorry, I asked, I asked this to be placed on the agenda this evening, as I had many questions regarding the process and the findings. But it is now my understanding that in order for me to ask any specific questions about this investigation, it would need to be reopened. While I had nothing to do with the amount of money spent, nor was I spoken to or participated in any conversation regarding it, I could not go along with spending any additional funds. Moving forward, it seems to me this town needs a fair process for residents and employees alike to bring concerns or complaints forwards to be addressed in a consistent, professional manner that protects both the town and the complainant. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we form a complaint and investigation policy, and further to instruct the town administrator to give the Board, the Board members, a username and password for the Mass Municipal Personnel Association website, so we can research other policy information from other communities.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
That was a motion.
Could I second that, please?
Motion's been moved and seconded. Which one are we making a motion on? No, no, there's two things in here, I think we should.
Well, the whole, you want me to separate it?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a complaint and investigative policy.
That's fine, didn't make.
Seconded, fine, make. We need a vote?
Yes. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a vote that we instruct the town administrator to give us a username and password for the MMPA Association website, so we can research policy information from other communities.
I did have one question. Andy, is there a limit to how many usernames there are for each town?
I believe we're limited to two.
And is it, are you, can you share those, or?
No.
So, we have two?
We get two with our, with our membership to the MMPA.
Okay, and obviously.
I'll double check, but that's my recollection from conversations with them in the past.
Can we table this until we find out whether, about, because I don't want to, sharing passwords and usernames is not a good idea.
Well, generally, you have one generic one for the town, because it's not, there's not any information that you can go in there and change or anything, it's just to pull information. Ordinarily, they used to send us out big books or information on CDs. They don't do that anymore. They just issue you a username and password, you can go on and research salaries, policies, all kinds of personnel advice.
Ms. McNab?
Yep.
Is it almost like a library card type, so that they have a library there for information for municipal leaders?
Well, the, if I, the MMPA, the Personnel Association, is one of the sub-organizations of the Mass Municipal Association, the MMA. MMA is essentially a lobbying group for cities and towns, and they have a number of There is a library or a resource center within the MMPA and also within the MMA. Some of it is open to anybody, some of it is password protected or is user-only. Typically, the information that we get from the MMPA that we require a username and password for is the annual salary survey. That's, as Carolyn said, they used to send that out in a, in a printed book. They went away from that a couple of years ago, and that's now an online database that's available to members. I'll, it, I'll have to check to see what's available to the, to the general public versus what's, what's restricted, and I can certainly do that.
The other thing I would say is, I can see, if we're going to try to develop policies to move forward here, that it's absolutely necessary and also cost-effective, I used to do it, is to pull policies from other agencies, because they've already been court-tested, and they've been, you know, we can call those agencies, see if they work, see what's better. So, I'd be all right with the rest of the Board to get the information, but I positively want to have that as an asset.
Oh, no, I think we, it's just a conversation for another day, it's just, we don't have all the information.
That's all, I just want to be, get all the information we can to do the best job we can, move forward with this, so thank you.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, we're just tabling it, it'll be on another future agenda, once Andy can get the information. Now, I did want to.
I'm calling.
Mr. Chairman?
John?
Andy made mention of two people having access. Nobody said who the two people were.
Andy, I'm assuming you're one of them.
That's not top secret, is it?
No.
No, it's Jody and myself.
Alisa?
And will we now consider that these unfounded complaints, that whole issue, would be done?
From the statement that Carolyn made, it's not being reopened. I did want to say just a couple of things before we move on. At the last meeting, there was a vote made not to pay for Town Council to be here, yet Town Council is sitting at the end of the table, and I'd like, Brian, if you could speak to that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had spoken with you, Mr. Chairman, and you thought it might be best if I was here for this particular matter. I do understand there was discussion last week about the other two selectmen not wanting, not wanting to spend the town's legal budget, or perhaps that I wouldn't be needed here. So it was kind of a compromise, I am here, obviously, but, but I am waiving the charges for my time here. I just thought it was important that I be here if needed, and if not, I would stay out of the way. And finally, I'd just like to add that I certainly respect Selectman Smart's, Selectman Smart's position and her statement. Your reasonable minds can disagree on how something should have been handled, and I certainly respect her request to try to get the Board on the same page as to how something similar to this would be handled going forward.
Thank you very much. The other thing I did want to just briefly say is, there's been some question about the investigation, what it was, and I did want to read something into the record, something that Mr. Riley, our Town Council, helped me put together, as he was the one kind of coordinating this whole investigation. And this is coming from Attorney Riley. I received a packet by mail from Ms. Smart earlier this year, apparently at the suggestion of the Inspector General's office. I did not act on it immediately, but when Ms. Smart followed up with me, I determined that the most reasonable course of action would be to refer it to the Board of Selectmen as the town's chief executive authority. Working with then-chairman Sue Licio, an executive session was scheduled over General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to consider complaints regarding public officers or employees, and I prepared notices to the affected employees regarding their rights to attend and participate in the session. The Board first met on March 24, 2015, with the employees to discuss the complaints and their responses to the complaints. At the conclusion of this session, Ms. Licio, Mr. McNab, Ms. Smart had recused herself from the session, and later once held, voted to refer the complaints to the department heads for the employees, namely the Board of Water Commissioners, the Chief of Police, for written responses. The Board of Selectmen itself is the town administrator's supervisor. The Board received two written responses. In addition, the Board met in a joint executive session with the Board of Water Commissioners on April 7. The Chief of Police attended the final executive session on April 14, 2015. I also met with the Board of Water Commissioners on April 3, 2015. In summary, the participating selectmen determined that the, that to the extent issues were raised in the complaints that should be addressed, they had already been addressed by the respective department heads, and that no further action, whether disciplinary or policy setting, of the Board of Selectmen was warranted. Complaints regarding town employees may be inquired into through a variety of levels of investigation, including the hire of an outside investigator and the conducting of one-on-one interviews. The Board determined at the onset that the investigation described in the above paragraph was likely to answer the Board's questions regarding the complaints, and the Board's ultimate findings confirm this. I did not find this conclusion to be unreasonable or unjustified. And if you'd like a copy of this.
You can get it later, thank you.
Just be part of the record.
All ready.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion, motion after I speak briefly here, to move on to 3.2. I would like to thank those who all worked together to try to find common ground to move forward. I hope for this difficult time that we've learned some lessons, and it's not to cast judgment on anyone, I'm not interested in doing that, but as the two Board members I'm proud to serve up here have indicated, we're going to work to make a comprehensive policy on complaints are handled, to protect the employees, to protect the public, and to assure that the highest level of integrity is maintained. We will hopefully do that as a team here, and move forward from this, and also that you people will have faith that we can work together, all right? And I give credit to the people who had to put aside some personal pain to get this done, and I give everyone here credit for that. And I hope that this is a step for the town, because when I saw Memorial Day here about us all being together, we'd always have to agree, but we have to move forward together. So let's try to do it in a professional manner, and I thank you for your time, and I make a motion to move to 3.2.
Karen?
Hi. Do I say my name?
Oh, okay, Karen Smith.
Karen Smith, thank you. Can we have the attorney's fees put up on the website, so we can see where the money was allocated during an open investigation?
It's just a matter of public record.
Our invoices are a matter of public record.
Is it up there, is it up there now?
It's not.
No, it's not. Normally, we don't put that up there, but we can put it up on the website.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, absolutely. You can also, any information like that, you can always request from the Selectmen.
So you can see it online, everybody can see it.
Joe?
Yes, James LaCoury, 171, Pittsburgh Road. I would like to know why one of the selectmen does not have that password to get into that secret program, because you're the people that are in charge of our town, and you should have access, one of you should have access, the chair, possibly you, so that you can pull up the information that's necessary. I don't feel that it's right that that is out of your control. I think it shouldn't be put back in your control.
So, it's not a secret database or anything like that, it's public information. What generally happens when we are asking for information of that sort is we direct the town administrator to gather it for us, he's full-time, we pay him very well for what he does. I don't know if he's gonna agree with that, but.
Anyway, I'd just like to make a point here.
And we're gonna, that's why we're talking about it at the next, next meeting.
I'd just like to see that happen. I think you should have that ability to do that, so, thank you for that.
Andrea?
Andrea Wood, Old Winnie House Road. In this policy that you're developing, it would be nice if you also put in there steps in the investigation, other than speaking to the people, requesting minutes, requesting records, going forward with other hard materials.
Point taken, Andrea. That's gonna be a discussion we'll have when we kind of try and craft this policy.
Thank you.
Yep. Sir?
John Rosa, 36, Fond de Rosa. In this investigation, my bank account, my routing number, my signature is posted on the town website. And I thought I'd bring that to the Board's attention, and the town administrators will put it up there.
Andy?
It was all part of the, part of the investigation materials that were filed by Selectman Smart. We put the entire information up there. It was about, I think there's about 70 or 80 pages worth of information up there.
This is directed to Mr. Sheehan and.
Mr. Riley, since you're here.
Would it be appropriate if after the meeting, that was, that particular article was taken down, and the questionable parts were blocked out, put back on the site? Would that be a solution? How about you, Mr. Sheehan, would you agree with that?
I have no, no objection to that.
In the meantime, damages been done by bank account, two different things, the town should be held responsible, or should be addressed in some way. I mean, identity fraud, the world can look at the website. Signature, my routing number, my checking account number is posted on your website.
Wow, that's appalling.
I actually contacted Mr. Riley today because of concerns about that, and I know there's, there's certain laws that protect financial information. When I had sent that information in, I sent it to our attorney, and it's, I was, never expected it to come back with, or be posted online.
How is it possible that information, I mean, we talked about protecting the public, working for the public, that information be posted?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the time since yesterday that it was discovered, and it's been on there, I made a criminal complaint, I've talked to the Attorney General and a lawyer, which will be, you will all be hearing from. And that needs to come down immediately, and we need to discuss that.
I requested that it come down immediately.
And has it been down?
Andy?
I heard about it tonight when you raised the issue. We'll take it down tonight.
It's on your website, you should know what's up there, correct?
Yep.
I put the documents up there, I put the, I put the, there's two.
Hey, please, through the chair.
There were two complaints filed by Selectman Smart. There were two complaints filed by Selectman Smart. I put both those complaints up there. I didn't think that it was my place to filter it. I didn't think that it was my place to redact anything. The investigation makes all of this information public. So we receive it?
No.
We put it up.
Wait, please, stop.
The findings, the findings were put up, the investigation, the complaints were put up. The check, and I'm sympathetic, and I, and I'll correct the information, but it was, the check was included as part of the complaint.
How would you say that was yours?
Mr. Clear, please.
James, please.
Yep.
Wouldn't it make sense, somebody gave you a check, to not make it a public thing? Your personal check, it was made public, wouldn't it make sense to you to block out maybe the name, or the routing number, the check number, or the signature? Basic, basic sense. I don't know what's going on here, but you're suspect.
Andy, can you please remove that?
I will. Like I said, I heard about it times, so...
And we will address this at a future meeting.
And will I be notified at the future meeting where we'll address this?
Yes.
Can I please?
Yep.
And I need something in writing. John Ozer, 36, Ponderosa, that's my name, that's who I am.
Okay.
And to make matters worse, I will not be able to receive payroll, write a check, use an ATM card, because of this matter for weeks.
Wow.
Not happening.
It will be removed at the end, at the conclusion of this meeting, and I apologize, and we will address this at a future meeting.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Okay. 3.2, are we set to move on?
I believe so.
Are you?
Carol?
3.2, "Review and approve request of Town Administrator Andrew Sheen to be reimbursed for up to eight unused vacation days." Andy?
Give them to him. Yes.
This is a standard...
Please stop talking, out of turn.
Standard request that the Board sees, you saw this a couple of weeks ago with the fire chief, there's a provision in most of the personal services contracts that allow those employees to sell back up to two weeks of unused vacation time. I think that I'll have at most eight days, so there's a fair chance that there'll be fewer than that. So I request the Board's indulgence in that.
And Andy, this is something that's in your contract, correct?
Correct.
And it's also something that we normally do for contract employees?
Correct.
Does any, either of you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
I think he...
I just defer, because you're seniority here, that's all, thank you. I just would, if it's all right, would everybody, no one has objections? I would just like to read that section into the record so people understand what we're deciding on. In Mr. Sheen's contract, Section 9, it states vacation. Sheen shall be entitled to 25 days' vacation leave per fiscal year. In recognition of the demands of the position and due to the unforeseen circumstances, with the approval of the Board, Sheen may be paid for his unused vacation time not to exceed two weeks per year. One thing I would like is we could just have what that amount is, if that's possible. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, for, if it's, if it remains eight days, and like I said, it could be a little bit less than that, it will be $2,999.20.
Thank you.
And there is, there is a line item in the budget that covers, covers this, this buyback provision.
I'll try to make it quick, because we have a lot in the agenda. Prior to the meeting, I was leaning towards voting no on this, but since I first got here, I got some additional documentation. And the documentation I got was that Mr. Sheen with the town, to increase his professional development, he's been going, I believe, for the last year, every Friday to Suffolk University to attain a certificate. So I find that, that maybe would cause him not to be able to take those days due to his commitment to going to Suffolk University every Friday. So in a second, I'm probably going to vote yes, or I was going to vote no. But the only thing I would like to state for the future is that I am going to be extremely, just to be fair to everybody, let them know, I'm going to be extremely hesitant next year to approve these, because $2,000, not against Mr. Sheen, but $2,000 could give us a lot of hours at the library for a couple, to help people out. But that's what the contracts state, and I believe if a contract's signed, you need to live by the standards. So that's, end of it, and I'm ready to vote.
What's in the contract for someone taking classes Monday a week?
Andy, there was an addendum that we approved.
Enjoy that.
Correct?
Correct. The Board, a year ago, I believe it was in April of 2014, entered into a, an amended contract with me that allowed me to attend this program. It's a, runs essentially the school calendar year, September to the end of May. The last class is this Friday. The Board supported it, supported my participation in the program for professional development services, and in return, I agreed to perform all of the normal duties, make up any hours that needed to be made up. And I think that the Board would, would acknowledge that, that I have kept up with, with my commitments. It also included a, essentially a penalty, so that if I leave before the end of my contract, which is a year from now, that I would reimburse the town.
And how many weeks did you go, Andy?
Twenty-five.
And I know for, just personally, I drove by many a night and saw, saw Andy in the office till at 10 o'clock at night, making up the hours, so... Any other?
No.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair...
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
I would move that we approve the request from the Town Administrator, Andy Sheen, to be reimbursed for up to eight days of unused vacation day.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we continue, I'm going to do, I want to do a five-minute recess, because my mother has to leave, and I want to say goodbye to her.
What a good voice.
(laughing) (inaudible) 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 (laughing)
Let me know when you're ready, Steve.
Can we just close the back doors, please, not interrupt all the... Thank you, I'd like my ear to shut.
Okay. Welcome back. It's been brought to the Board's attention that there was a mistake made with the March 31th executive session meetings. Those are not yet ready to be released. Could I have a motion to rescind those minutes, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we rescind the vote to release the executive session minutes for March 31, 2015.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to rescind the March 31, 2015 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Clock abstained.
Alrighty, we are on 3.3, "Review and approve permit fee for public regional high school." Andy?
So we've, we had talked about this a while ago. This is with respect to the, to the new high school project. We have had a number of conversations about, about the way that the permitting fee and the inspection costs will be handled. The one outstanding item that we had was that we hadn't actually adopted the fee yet. We didn't want to use, the Board decided a year and a half ago or so, that they didn't want to use the base fee, because we're really just taking money from one pocket and putting it into the other. So, working with Rich Hanks, we, we put together a, an amendment to the fee schedule, the building department fee schedule, that is outlined in this, or described in this memo that's in front of you tonight. Essentially, it would be an upfront fee of $75,000 at the time of initial application, and then it allows the town to assess additional fees to compensate us for inspectional services costs for building, gas, plumbing, and electrical going forward.
Do you have any questions?
Is Mr. Hanks here? I'd be much more comfortable if I had him to talk to.
I don't see him. I do have an email where he gave me some, some feedback on an earlier draft of this. Essentially, I incorporated the, the pieces that he, that he brought to my attention.
Was it requested that he be here, Mr. Sheen?
I did not make the request of him, no.
Only because I'm new here, I really would have liked to have Mr. Hanks input, so this is very important, so that all the blocks are aligned here, and he's, since he's going to be the one implementing, it's just my opinion, I really liked him to make sure that the machine's going to run well with the person who's going to do it on a day-to-day basis. And I apologize for if it slows it down, but I just respect Mr. Hanks' opinion, and I need to know that he's comfortable if he's going to be doing the day-to-day operations. That's just my opinion.
Karen?
Yeah, I also, I'm glad Mr. Riley's here. Can we set this, you're looking at the motion right now, because I thought we had to set to set an actual permit fee, and I'm not sure how we would assess it, there seems to be no cap on it. I, this is uncharted territory, so...
While he's reading that, Andy, we had, this is a while ago, so my memory's a little foggy on it. What was the total that we had approved?
Uh, a year or so ago, the board set a, a budget cap number of $350,000.
No, after, after that, when we...
Later on, it, it came down to around 150. There wasn't a firm cap.
I think it was like 140. Oh, here it is. He must have, he must have been watching on TV.
I think we, if...
No. Uh, Gordon has some questions, since he wasn't a part of the process when we were setting this fee for the, the high school building project, so...
Um, is it, would you be more comfortable sitting up here with us, or, or back down? I'm not trying to change the corner, but I'd just like to make it so you feel well.
I'll move up with you.
Is that all right with the board?
That's fine.
Thank you. Um, before you came here, I'm new to the board, and what I, my statement was that due to my high regard for your professionalism, and the fact that you're gonna be the person on the day-to-day operations up there making sure that machine runs well, I need to know, um, is that I make this to him, this document here, that you're comfortable with this here? Um, I just wanna make sure that we're making a decision so this process can go smooth forward.
Yeah, Andy and I talked about this.
Okay. I just wanna give you the professional courtesy, since you're gonna be the person on the ground every day.
Yep, thank you.
Representing us in the town. Okay, so I'm good, no more questions?
Gordon, when, when we first, this first came up, I believe Andy had sent the, a memo to you, Rich, and you had, basically, Andy just incorporated what Rich had asked him to incorporate.
Thank you very much.
Right.
I appreciate it, just that I, when I make a decision, I wanna make sure. There's only one thing I heard different, is that originally it was 350, and now the figure is...
Around 150. For, uh, the, to give the history, the, um, North Middlesex High School Building Committee, when they were first putting this project together, this goes back to prior to the debt exclusion vote, I believe, um, they asked the board what the permit fee was for budgeting purposes. And, um, and the normal fee would be 850, or something like, somewhere in that ballpark.
They paid the entire fee, it would be north of the 100,000.
Wow, so we're being very generous to them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but again, it's a sort of, you know, money out of one pocket and into another. Um, so for, for budgeting purposes, the Board of Selectmen voted to give a number of 350,000. And then as we get a little further into the project, and we, and Rich and, and his inspectors started to evaluate what their time was likely to be, we came up with, with hourly rates for the inspectors, a, a flat stipend for Rich, and from there, we came up with a, a fee of around 100, or an expectation that the total would be around 150, probably not to exceed 100.
Okay. Wasn't like, Rich, wasn't it like 140 something?
Well, it's kind of an unknown number, cause we, um, my end of...
But your estimate was somewhere around that, wasn't it? I can't remember, we, it was a while ago.
I don't recall 140, but it was one, one...
Okay, you all.
Um, well, first of all, I wanna thank Mr. Shan and the board members for taking the time to bring me up to speed here. I'm very detail-oriented, so I apologize for that, but I can't change. So, are you comfortable with this 150 figure, sir?
Well, it's, it's, it's an unknown number, because this, mine is a set number, they, they, they know what they're gonna pay me, that's a set number.
All right.
Wiring, plumbing, gas is by the hour.
Okay.
So, so I, I don't know what they're gonna end up being in the long run.
Didn't you make an estimate, though, Rich? Wasn't it like...
Yeah, 150 to 175, is, is, is my best guess.
Yeah, but you, I think, I thought it was around, at the most, 100,000 or something like that for the, for the hourly. I'm just, I'm, my, I'm vaguely remembering.
Um, it, it could be in, in that...
Or vaguely misremembering.
Right. It's, it's, you know, and the, the tough part is that it is 44 months from when we got the plans to completion, so, and until we know who the contractor is, which they probably know, cause there was a bid last, opening last week, until we know the contractor and get a feel for how everybody is, and how much involvement we need to be there, uh, it's just kinda hard to speculate what that end number will be.
Right, and...
And that, that, and that's been the complex, complexity of this, is that what is that true end number?
Right. Um, just so you know, is, um, I sort of understand, in 1977, I was on the construction crew of 500 modular cells, so I understand that everything is hopeful, that it's a perfect day. Uh, my only concern is that if the money runs out, our inspections stop until we're paid. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm good with this. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Just to respond to, uh, Selectman Spurts' question, uh, in my opinion, the board has the authority to adopt this. It's, I'd say it's probably unusual to have a special fee for one special project, but, you know, this is kind of a different kind of project as well, being the regional district. And, um, and so, in my opinion, there's, I don't see any legal problem with the way this is set up now.
I, oh, I did have one question. So, is, Mr. Riley, there's no issues with, we set an initial fee of 75,000, and then to increase it at a later date is not a, or to ask for an additional fee?
Well, as I understand it, it's not really increasing, it's just the, uh, the, the builder, the, the district, um, understands that they're gonna be paying these other inspectors hourly, and they've agreed to, they've agreed to pay it when those, when it's done.
Right.
Or, or as you go.
So, so it's just, any costs associated with, so if there's mileage involved, or if there's a special equipment we need, or it's, it's, so it's equipment and mileage as well, so, costs associated with the project.
Carolyn?
Um, Attorney Riley, should we make clear who's responsible for paying us? Cause this doesn't indicate, you know, would it be the building committee? I don't know if that should be necessary in the vote, or the contractors?
If I could on that call?
Yep.
Um, that's been a, sort of an uncertainty all along. We've had this, I think we've, this has come up before. Uh, just last week, in talking with the OPM, the, the owner's project manager, um, he explained to me that in the bid documents, they, they instructed the bidders to not include any permit, uh, not include a line item for, for permitting. So, they're not carrying that, the contractors are not carrying that in their proposals. The fees will be paid by the building committee.
Okay. So, that's not necessary in the vote?
I don't think it is, no. I don't think it's necessary to, to have that specified.
As long as it's clear on the record that they're responsible for that.
All set?
Do you want me to just read what he has here for the motion?
Sure.
That'll work. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board waive the normal permit fee, and in its place, hereby adopt a fee that is intended to compensate the town for plan review inspections, expenses, and administrative services related to the project. An initial fee in the amount of 75,000 shall be payable at the time of initial permit application. The town shall periodically assess such additional fees as are sufficient to offset the cost of building, electrical, gas, and plumbing inspections.
Is that all right with you, counsel? As, as Red, I second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, you're out of the hot seat.
Can I just have, Mr. Chairman, can I just have 20 seconds to say something to Mr. Hanks?
Sure.
Um, recently, is it Aquarius Lane? Correct me if I'm wrong. There's a, uh, very dangerous situation up there over the house, and I've talked to some of the residents up there, and as everyone knows, I hold people accountable for when they don't do things right. Well, in this case, I wanna praise you, cause the neighbors up there have a feeling that the town cares about that dangerous situation with the house collapsing, and you breathe me, and, uh, let's, let's keep that safe for the, the kids and the firefighters from my hat to go in there. I don't want anyone to cost their life because of that danger. So, thank you for that, from me personally.
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All set, Rich?
All right.
Thank you. 3.4, review and sign agreements for back, backup paramedic intercept services with the towns of Ashby and Pepperell. Andy?
So, the chief, Chief Boynton has been, uh, been working with our neighbor and communities on these intercept agreements. Um, he has, um, worked out the agreements with, with the, uh, his counterpart chiefs, and it has also been, been reviewed and approved by Rick Holland at Copelman and Page. Um, this would essentially, these are slightly different from the last set of agreements. Uh, in the last agreements, the town of Townsend only get paid if the, if the sending community, in this case, Ashby or Pepperell, um, if they get paid, we get paid. These new agreements, we get paid, no matter whether they get paid or not, so it should work to, to our benefit. He's also working on similar agreements with Groton and Lunenburg, and hopes to have those in the coming months.
Andrea?
What does the fee cover?
Well, the fee is intended to, to cover our costs, our basic costs of responding.
Insurance, wear and tear salary, and replacement goods?
Well, it's, I, I don't, I don't have a full breakdown of, of what the fee, uh, covers, and the, and the fee just goes into the receipts reserved account. Um, it goes in as a lump sum amount, so it's not broken out as a percentage to insurance, a percentage to capital investments, a percentage to employee benefits, or anything like that.
Chief...
When you figure out a fee that, you should take all the things into consideration. You don't wanna lose one when you're providing a service.
Right.
Chief Boynton?
Yes.
Is this a standard agreement between communities?
Yes, it's a standard agreement, and it is hypothetically based on the wear and tear, all the expenses, hourly rate, fuel, uh, and estimated how, duration of the call. You know, we never know exactly how long the call's gonna take, but on average, when we go to Ashby or one of these communities that were out of town, uh, two medics or, or two people are out of town for about two hours. So, it takes all that into consideration, and every break you go.
Carolyn?
I'm a money maker.
Okay.
Just to address Andrea's concern, this isn't, this isn't a primary agreement, this is just a backup in case they don't have...
Oh, yeah, I know.
...service there, so it's a little different than...
You know, it's used to spend money anyway.
Yeah, and it's much better this way, having the flat fee, than taking the chance the person doesn't have insurance, and we don't get reimbursed at all, so...
Oh, I agree with that.
Do you have any questions, Gordon?
Tom, I'd just like to make a quick statement. Um, as a former EMT, nurse, commander of first responders and incident control, as a selectman now, I'm tremendously thankful, I, that we have a manager like you, Chief, um, who's gonna be in charge of people whose, our families and lives are in crisis, so I couldn't be more happy. I've spent some time with you the last couple of weeks, and I think you're a first-class manager, so let's move forward, and thank you very much.
Are we ready to...
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve and sign the agreements for backup paramedic intercept services with the town of Ashby and Pepperell.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Uh, two originals for each one.
Okay.
Flagged.
While we're signing, 3.5, discuss Department of Revenue Fiscal Health Review. I know Carolyn, you had brought this up a couple of meetings ago, and Andy, you were gonna check into whether that's a possibility. I know we did one a couple, how long ago was it?
Uh, four years ago, the DOR came out and did a financial management report for us, um, but I'll, I'll listen to, uh, to what Carolyn has to say on...
Yeah.
Yeah, this, they, yeah, let me give you the copies of what they offered to us at no cost. Um, I'm sure, and we can pass it down to Andy after, but they have several different ones, and my, my thought process was, one of them is the, um, assess financial condition, fiscal health, and what they would actually, one of our goals was to make a debt management policy, and one, they would come out and look at it, and look at the debt we cut, have coming up, you know, and kinda give us a report on how to incorporate that into our budget, kinda long-term strategies.
So, Andy, I thought, when I talked to you about this after one of the meetings, isn't there, cause they, they won't, they don't always come, correct? When they are requested, it's, it's kind of if they have space for you?
Yeah, they, they've come out a couple of times to Townsend in the last six years. They did a, um, they did a regionalization study for Townsend, looking at police and dispatch with Ashby. They did that in, I think in 2009, and then they came out in '11 and did the financial management review, I think it was 2011, final, financial management review. Uh, a, a year or two after that, we contacted them again, and I forget what we were gonna have them look at. Uh, it was another, it was a, some sort of a consolidation, uh, I think of departments, and, um, and they said, you know, "We're happy to help, but we gotta help 351 cities and towns, we can't, we can't keep going back to, to Townsend and, um, and neglecting the other cities and towns." So, um, so they put us off at, at that time, um, and that's in their, uh, in the Research Bureau that they run out of the Department of Revenue, so I don't know if this is the same, um, the same type of product, uh, running out of Zach Blake's department, Rick Kingsley's department.
Before we kind of requested which of these we might be interested in, would, um, would you be able to find out whether they would be willing to come out, or whether we have to pick one?
Sure, yeah, I can look further into it. Uh, the other thing I'd, I'd mention, one of the goals that the board discussed last year was, uh, financial policies, and I've been working on those, and hope to be wrapping those up in the next month or two and bringing to the board for, uh, for adoption, uh, adoption by the, the board, the finance committee, and the various finance officers. And, and debt management is a piece of that. Um, whether it makes sense to talk to DOR before that, or after that, um, you know, I think it's, I think any kind of input that we can get on, on our operations here, especially financial operations, I, you know, I welcome, welcome that.
Carolyn?
Well, the one I was interested in, Colin, was the assess the financial condition fiscal health, and it, and it basically says, "Well, assess your community's financial condition through the use of a scorecard and offer suggestions to improve the long-term outlook and strengthen fiscal health and flexibility." And I had already talked to Zach about that, and that's the one that he had recommended, um, because I was talking to him about our increased dependence upon free cash to pay our debt.
Right.
And that's the one that he recommended. The procedure is, is that you just fill out the application and make a request. They might be slow, they might come out in a month, they might come out in nine months, but once your, your request is in there, you're just on a list. Um, so, to even, to even be open to any of these, we need to contact them and let them know that we're interested in that.
So, you had requested that we talk about the goals, which finances is a huge part of that. Can we kind of wrap this into that discussion?
If you're more comfortable with that.
And then that way, we talk about it all at the same time?
Okay.
All right? Sound good?
I just have one question. Is there, uh, any cost of this, or is this a free service to our town, Andy?
Right.
I believe it's free service, I think.
I'm, I'll go with the recommendation by two of the board members here.
So, we'll see in an upcoming meeting, hopefully, there's still space on the, what's the next meeting, the second?
Next week, the second.
How was that meeting looking for? Do we have...
Uh, we've got a number of appointments that night, um, but...
We can discuss the agenda and whether, and...
Well, we can at least, we can at least put the goals on, if you'd like.
Okay, and can we just put this on as well?
Sure, yep.
All right, so we're gonna wait on that until...
Do you want me to bring the application? Just click that PDF, just, your request, one page, request letter.
Sure. All right, 3.6, review and approve one-day liquor license.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve and sign the one-day liquor license for Terry Roy, BFW Post 6538, for a graduation party from, with serving hours from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM on June 11th, 2015.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
4.1, review request of the li, of the Board of Library Trustees to appoint Molly F...
Benavides.
Ward...
Benavides.
Benavides. Little accent in that. Uh, Ward Clark, Cheryl Cludier, Terry Duggan, Mary Foster, Rachel Guerrero, James Sager, Patricia Sager, and Patricia, uh, Thomas Jennings to the Long Range Planning Committee with terms from May 26, 2015, to completion of the Long Range Plan. Do we have any, oh, we have some library people. Is this, this is something that was, if I remember, it's required as part of one of your...
Yes, it's required.
Okay.
To be eligible for grants, federal...
Yes, that's, I knew it was required for something.
So, we revisit it every five years, create new goals, um, for the library, and that allows us to measure our growth, and to take input from the community, and, um, obviously our library director, children's librarian, who we think are excellent.
I think they're excellent, too.
Yeah, very good.
So, any questions? Do I have a motion?
No, we actually had posted this almost a month ago, so it's all set. Um, Mr. Chair, I would move that we appoint, as requested by the Board of Library Trustees, Molly Benavides, Ward Clark, Cheryl Cludier, Terry Duggan, Mary Foster, Rachel Guerrero, James Sager, Patricia Sager, Pat, Patricia Thomas Jennings to the Long Range Planning with terms from May 26, 2015, to the completion of the Long Range Plan.
Second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5.1, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session, and those will be ready tomorrow?
I've got one set tonight, and there'll be another set tomorrow.
Nope.
One of the names was, um, possibly incorrect.
Yeah, it should be Beverly Sager, not James Sager, or, sorry, not, not Patricia.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, it says James Sager here, it should be Beverly.
There's James and Beverly.
Oh, we have Patricia Sager.
Yeah, we have Patricia.
That's, but it is Beverly. I don't know if her real name's...
I would move to amend that motion to be Beverly Sager.
Second.
Sorry.
My apologies.
Benavides, right.
Motion's been amended to change Patricia Sager to Beverly Sager. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hope Patricia's not upset.
5.1, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Uh, can I just bring up one quick thing, cause it just occurred to me when I was thinking about Andy's vacation situation? Is there any way we could, um, because everyone's going on vacation, just, uh, plan one more meeting for sometime during June now, before everyone gets really busy now, to get a date to work on that? Would that be fair? Just, uh...
To work on...
Pick another date, so we have...
Pick a date now?
Yes, so, because...
Well, it's, it would be two weeks from, from the second.
As long as it's sometime in June.
Yeah, the way it lays out would be June 2nd, June 16th, and June 30th.
Those is fine with me, but just so we, so people can make plans with their lives, so...
Yeah, we have, um, we just generally run on a two-week schedule.
All right, I didn't know that, but...
And then, and then we, we amend it as we need to.
So, we'll have the second, and we'll definitely have another one before the end[1677.88]